In order to continue forward with the grants that were received for the Love's Truck Stop road changes, it says whereas the city of Hamilton has received a hundred and fifty thousand dollar CDBG dash ED grant supplemented by a one hundred and fifty thousand dollar Appalachian Regional Commission grant for roadway improvements to serve the new Love's Truck Stop plan to locate on exit fourteen, whereas and whereas, but this will be on the agenda for next month tonight until we adopt that so we can proceed following with our grants. Who did this come from, May 5th? Is that this?
Yes, sir.
That's what I'd like to do before we get into our work session agenda, to kind of update them on this retirement system matter that's come up and I believe has been approved as a new law and with a study ongoing maybe, would you kind of explain what you know about this stuff for?
Yes, that was something that was, I believe, passed in this last legislative session where I think in two thousand and thirteen they kind of split the tier one employees and the tier two employees and the benefits between the two are a little different. According to some of the rulings that they had, the cities did not actually have to participate in that, so now we have the option of changing our tier two people to tier one, so that everybody's a tier one. But to do that, there's going to be probably quite a bit of an expense involved during that gap of time from two thousand and thirteen till now to bring all the tier two people up to the tier one status. They've recommended, some people have been checking with retirement systems and retirement systems has basically said, this was their reply that they gave to one of the other cities, that at this time we are still gathering information on how to administer this act. Our actuary is currently working on the annual valuations for over nine hundred agencies, nine hundred cities or participants in retirement systems. When they complete these valuations, they will begin work on determining the cost for each agency, what it's going to cost them to convert those people to a tier one status. So they're recommending right now for nobody to do anything until they can give us these figures of what it's going to cost us to change our tier two people to a tier one status. We've got until like, I think it's ten, one of twenty to do this, no, I'm sorry, it's five, eight of twenty-one to decide whether we're going to actually do this or not and you know to what extent we're going to allow this to happen.
Do you think it would be prudent for us to have a quote expert come in and tell us, advise us on this matter, or are you going to just keep your ear to the ground and see what others are doing?
Yeah, right now at this time I don't think it is because you know we've just gone through that horrific changeover in retirement systems anyway and I know this is from them for another league after we've gone to this new system and now they're changing it again as far as people's status, that's going to create a lot of work for them. I think that's why they're giving us until May of twenty-one to decide if we're going to do this or not, so until we get some figures from them, I don't think it would be necessary.
If you don't have any money figures.
Oh, no. They've got over nine hundred agencies, they've got to figure what it's going to cost the each agency to convert their tier two people to tier one status, so there's not going to be anything anytime soon.
Well, if this is actually law, is there any opt-out options or do you know about that?
I don't know specifically, I mean I think if it's law, everybody's probably going to be a tier one at some point. As far as on the municipality side of it, I don't think we'll be able to change that, but I do not know that.
Okay.
It may go back to the extent of, are we going back to two thousand and thirteen or does this become in effect from this point forward? I don't know how they're going to do it, I really don't think they do at this time.
You were informing me about a tax-free day for our area, weren't you, a while ago?
Yes, the city is...
What that's going to do, you probably can't even know.
It's a back-to-school sales tax, that tax-free holiday weekend, they have it, we participate in it every year and it will be July the nineteenth through the twenty-first.
We probably need to make that as a announcement at our next meeting.
Yes, you can announce it because when we did it in the resolution, I think, in seventeen, when we did it last time, it stays in effect unless we change it, if we decide not to participate in it, so.
Can we do a resolution at the second meeting in a month?
We don't have to because when we did it in seventeen, we did it, we do it every year unless we change it.
Going forward, I guess, okay. All right, okay, well I didn't know if we had any business that needed to come for a vote or anything.
No, I checked with it and it's still showing us as active, current, continuous participants, so.
I wanted to thank all of y'all for making our groundbreaking special today, I appreciate all the participation. Well, I'm sorry you couldn't be there and have one of them cold hot waters and scotch right for everybody.
I just couldn't figure out how to make my forward a walk.
Well, the terrain was a little rough down there, I must say. And some of us didn't have our cleats on either, we sort of stumbled around like grass and lumpy fields out there, but we got it done and I'm real proud that everyone's...
I think it'll be a...
I think it's going to be a really nice thing for our city. We're having the what's called the overhead inspection at the rec center, that's just saying that everything's in place and like it needs to be for us to do the wrap-up. Once that's over this week, then they'll be able to come in and quickly lay those floors and get the painting work inside done and we're going to finish that job in the month of July and we're trying to nail down a specific date. We think it's going to be around the twenty-fourth and Tim wants to get his goals put up August the second, third, so he can start making all the plans he's got to make, so it's working out pretty good, I think everything's going to be very, very nice, I just want to give out a little update on that. So far, it looks like that even though we're paying as we go now out of our general fund, our numbers in the general fund are holding up rather well and I don't see that this is lead us down to go ahead and fix the rec center correctly as we go, I'm real proud of that. Sell of old city hall and the current police station, just want to open up that for discussion, the subject has come back up in recent days and touched base with church officials and they're still interested, they would be a client that would show interest in purchasing this property, of course their first question is, what do you want for it? I guess my first question is, do we want to get rid of the police station or keep it? That's pretty much what we got to decide before we start making plans for new police stations at new locations and all those things, so it's open for discussion, I'm just going to lay it on the table and y'all pick it up and at some point I'll put my two cents worth in and I just wanted to bring it up for discussion today.
Let me ask you something, if we stay where we are, the first thing I guess some people would just like to know, what would it cost us to fix the old city hall? And my idea is it would cost us about the same thing for to fix the old city hall, just what to build the new, of course now. If, I don't know the size, in my mind I'm thinking a thousand square foot basement with the court system down in it and showers and all for the people to have and bathrooms down there and so on and basin there and then all the upstairs which would be two thousand square feet, I don't know if that'd be big enough or not. And if it might need to be bigger than two thousand square feet, I don't know what all we got up there we'd have to put in.
Well, you've got, we're going, currently we're making plans to move the cable company up there and move the court magistrate and her help down here and that's in the planning stages and going to happen fairly soon. I've asked the cable folks to be moved by August the second, they said they're going to shut down and move the twenty-fourth of July, they'll be out of here before August second, I've talked to them today.
So we're not going to have as much in it, if we're building new, we're not going to have as much in there as we've got now?
Well, we'll have to decide if we're going to keep the cable company under our roof at that point, we'll have to provide them an office or move them, ask them to move out. We have secured a annual renewable lease with them, one year at a time, a five-year renewable lease with us having the options to make changes and each year as we deem necessary or if we want to make changes each year, we have that option. It's a five-year lease and we put the address of that building on the lease. So safe places there, they're there, we need an interrogation room for people that we have to bring in for questioning, we need offices for our police secretaries, we need offices for, they have a joint office for the officers, but the chief has an office and I think at least one lieutenant has an office and investigator has an office, so there's several offices that's going to be needed, we'll just have to come all up and see, but I think it's going, we'd need to be bigger than two thousand square feet, I really do, just for the office complexes. We might get by with...
Well, we don't mind if we're going to do it, in my own personal opinion, is do it right now, so we don't have to be doing it again the next five years.
Right.
But what I'm wondering is, I don't mind if you want to stay up there, that doesn't bother me, but still you're going to have to spend a lot of money if you stay up there.
One of the main things we've got going on right now is that if we have a meeting up there and take a bathroom break, we're in trouble, the bathroom's back up and the plumbing is so old, Rodney had a galvanized pipe today that they dug out of the ground over just past the county shop and it shows what happens on the inside of that galvanized. It totally corrodes to, I mean you can't even put anything through the inside of the pipes and I think we've got some stuff in the ground and that old city hall that has done that has corroded up to the point that nothing passes through it, including sewage and so we have terrible problems with bathrooms, we've got to provide a new set of bathrooms for that building that are functional if we stay in it, that would be the big issue as I see it.
Well, the other thing somebody asked a question about is adding police is up there intact, of course you don't have really have any up there anyway, they're all supposed to be out patrolling, you know, but what I told somebody before was what we need to do is have one up there every day walking the streets, which is, and they could, he wouldn't have to be, they could, the chief could give them, they'd take time about, in other words, a week about, being up there and walking the streets, they would be more in the city than they are now if you had this one person up there because we don't really have anybody up there now, I'm sure, I don't ever see anybody and I'm living there.
I guess the closest thing we have to is the county's security there at the courthouse, we don't have anyone walking the beat, so to speak, every day as far as being out and about the businesses in the downtown area, most of the time they patrol in their cars and they go all directions towards, they are doing, we don't have very much visibility up there on foot, I'm assuming.
I didn't think so, I've always thought it'd be a good idea regardless of how visibility up there, we never have, been lucky, I guess.
I think what we need to do is next Monday night, just spirit on the agenda and take a vote as to whether or not we want to move forward with selling property and building station, at that point we put a plan together. I think we've got to know how everybody feels by vote before we can move forward with it.
Well, I'm not going to know how I feel until I know how much, an estimate of how much it's going to cost, an estimate of how much the new building's going to cost and an estimate of how much repairing the old building's going to cost, I'm going to have to have some numbers before I have an opinion.
And how much could that be if for that building?
I don't have any idea.
I don't think we need to consider any kind of basement because of fire codes and ADA accessibility, I just don't think that would work at all to have court down there where there's just one entrance, you know, it's kind of underground or whatever, I don't think we would ever be able to use anything like that, other than for storage.
And if it had two floors, you'd have to have an elevator, so you're looking at one large...
Well, if you can't have a basement there and have them coming in it, of course you could have two exits out of that basement, that's not a big deal, you can dig, even if it's halfway under the ground, you know, you could put blocks and dig an exit out in behind and have one in the end too, you can have two exits, I built many basements that way, where you had, you know, you could have blocks up out to there, but now I'm not, it doesn't matter to me, but I know it's going to be a, and I hate to spend a lot of money personally on what we've got up there because as we all know, it's wore out. But I'd be happy to vote majority of this people if you want to do.
I think the minimum we'd be looking at for a police station that will house everything we've got to do and work for the years to come would be six to seven hundred thousand dollars minimum. I don't see us getting that kind of money for the building we're going to be selling.
No, we're about...
We might get two fifty.
You got to get the same number, I said two, two fifty.
So we're probably talking about...
About half a million dollars.
We lost the, lost the half million to...
I would say the biggest thing up there like you mentioned would be the restroom, I think we need to kind of figure out what we could do on that, that part of it and as far as fixing or adding on or whatever and see what we can do on that part because that's going to be the biggest, biggest thing, I'd say.
Really, for public gatherings, that auditorium really appeals to me, that's the one thing I hate to give up is our nice auditorium that is in that building, that'll hold more than a hundred people to sit down, we just don't have a spot like that anywhere else, we could maybe devise something in the rec center when they're not in use, but that's a pretty good standby for us and that's the one reason, the police offices, where their offices are, but giving up that auditorium's hard for me to envision right now, that's the one thing I do love about that building and I just don't see us having another place like that in our possession, so that makes me kind of want to work with that old building a little bit, but...
You might back out when you get the price on working here.
Well, yeah, that's true, you know, numbers do talk loud.
That seven hundred thousand might look good if you could get two hundred for that, spend the half million, it'd probably look good on the unit. Now, I'm not against it, don't get me wrong, whatever y'all, I'm not going to be around to be going to it.
As Tammy says, the numbers are big deciders here and she makes a great point on deciding what you want to do and probably what we don't want to do is look at numbers and decide what we got to do. One of the things that come into play in public buildings is the plan, so if you start devising a plan, you have to pay for that plan, so...
And that's what I'd have in mind, you're going to have our take, you know how expensive it is.
They know how to charge, huh?
Want me to do some feelers before we even hire anybody to see about bathrooms?
Well, you got to know how many square feet though you're going to want to put in there too, that's...
I'd like to, I'd like to be looking at maybe a new set of bathrooms, maybe make closets out of the current bathrooms because we're going to have to jackhammer up all the floors to fix those, that plumbing and I don't know, it'll be more than just in the bathrooms, wherever it runs under the concrete, it's going to all have to come out if we use those old bathrooms and repair them.
But if you're going to use that, you won't have to use those, it wouldn't be, I'd put the bathroom somewhere else and put the pipes running out if you had to floor, you know, behind, I had thought about that, behind and that come out there and just put in two sets of bathrooms, ladies and men on that back part and have everything new coming out and not, you wouldn't have to worry about that in the floor.
You could raise it up and run it out, back of the wall, wouldn't that be great?
Certainly need to have a handicap accessible bathroom also, let me do a little work and I just wanted to leave this out for discussion today, not making a decision, but and maybe get some ideas about construction, if we're going to go on one level, maybe get some idea about how much square footage and what it's costing for square foot for construction, let's say with a nice brick front on it, all metal standalone building with a brick front on it, that'll be attractive on the grounds here, maybe something like that, let me do a little work on that, we'll talk about this again.
I don't know if you're going to find a flat place here for that, that's the reason I was talking about places before, I don't know a flat place left where there's enough room to build a building and have it parked.
If we break the police, if we break the police station here, I want it right out there.
Yeah.
I don't want to mess up the front, pretty nice area we got that shows off this building.
Yeah, that's on the place.
Um, but the, there's an office that may be empty soon that's up here in the middle of town and that's the Alabama Power Office, I don't know if that's large enough, I don't know, I don't think that's...
All in that, I don't know where we can vote, could...
I don't like that idea.
That's just a fact, and that's what I'm talking about, that's just a fact to me, I let them, I let them know it too before, because what I thought about it in my read, start trying to explain to me why they're moving it, plus for two thousand, three thousand more people in one building, saying it's doing it for a reason, I said, don't start.
We're going to, we're going to explore this more, let me get some numbers together.
Yeah, we need to look into that, that's strictly politics and all that.
Sullivan's House has a possible chamber office and a use for the building, the chamber has viewed this building, didn't have too many negative thoughts, they had a lot of positive thoughts about possibly finding this to be their new headquarters for the chamber and they've also promised to respect the historic integrity of the building and keep it as undisturbed as possible while they house their office in that left bedroom there as you go into the building and living room kitchen stay intact and as little disturbance as possible on the bedroom itself and they wanted to remain the same look that it's got and to have the historic value and integrity that's stayed, when people come to look, they'll see it pretty much as it was and is.
I think that'd be a great idea and get that expense off the city.
I'd love to, I'd love to see...
We're not giving it, we still have the expense, they're just negating it.
No, they'll keep it up.
No, we keep it up, they're just standing, right?
Well, we would, we would have a probably a little less expense with the chamber in the, out of the monies that we afford them each year, a lot of times maybe rent comes out of that or utilities or something, so we might adjust the amount we give them every year, I'm not sure that we would, but...
The rent comes out of the deus, the money that the city gives them is a contracted fee for the events that they provide and that, I mean, it's a contract and specified money, so the rent comes out of the deus.
Okay, I mean, that, then we wouldn't be adjusting the amount we give them.
So has Andrea come up with her list and the cost for all the repairs?
She said she wants to get with us real soon on that, if they, if we decide we would allow the chamber to go in there and get all the little repairs out of the way, the things that's got to be done and then...
Well, again, do we not think that how much money we're looking at before we decide what we're going to do?
It's possible that that would be the order it comes in, but pretty much we're trying to, if we fix that building up, daily care for a building is much better than twice a year opening it up and having some minor events in it and have to go through the cleanup process every time before you use it and that kind of thing, so I think the chamber building there would maintain that building to a big degree, that it don't fall on someone's burden every time we have an event, have a major cleanup in the building and the rodents are eating through the walls, things like that, squirrels have taken it over right now and we're having to chase them out, put metal over where they eat through the holes, all kinds of stuff's going on, so...
Well, there's somebody in that chamber office all, I mean it's open every day?
No, it's open two days a week.
Two days a week?
Like half the day?
And that...
Who owns that building, we rent that or do they pay it or?
The chamber rents their own space.
Okay. All this is discussion too, nothing been said one way or the other if it's to be an office or not, it's just something, we're trying to get... It's just something, we're trying to get some idea of how to keep the building up and keep it clean.
I know Andrea was gonna go and make a list of everything that needed to be done. We have the original list that the Historical Society gave us as to what they were gonna do and to what needed to be done. I'm assuming Andrea put the two lists together, and she's coming up with the price for the Historical Society of what they agreed to do and a price for what we have to do.
She's coming with a presentation, I'm not for sure.
Okay, which she'll do.
Uh, she said she could do it right away. She had a hindrance, she had a hindrance today. She's, uh, she couldn't do it today. I, I wanted it today, but I think it could be at the next work session. With that said, why don't, why don't we just go ahead and plan for it to come and, and explain, uh, those numbers and the matters that need attention at the next work session? And, uh, and we'll decide possibly if we want to allow it to become an office or if we want to keep it just as a vacant building.
If we're gonna have to keep it up with them in there two days a week, we better leave it vacant. Or we can go ahead and, uh, have money left to keep on spending on the building. And I can see it's a whole lot better off after we spent, bought and spent on it, what it was, before it started.
You can spend a lot of money on old buildings like that.
Yeah, and if it's not taken care of, you can do it every year.
So let me get this straight, though. We're still responsible for the building and all the repairs. The Chamber will just be in it two days a week, just so there would be activity in it and, and it wouldn't be sitting empty. But we're, it's still our building, we're responsible for everything. Less what the Historical Society has agreed to take care of, but it's still our building. Will the Chamber, are you gonna ask them or does somebody ask them? Are they gonna be responsible when people wanna rent it? Or is renting it gonna be an option if it's completed? Or how's all that gonna work?
I have no idea.
Okay.
We haven't got that forward yet.
I don't know, best thing to do is be soon. Or you can get back to do it.
Yeah, I thought that's what you were telling me, I was talking to you, saying that you're gonna play for a police station.
Although, yeah, I just don't know the answers to them.
ID Andrea.
I doubt it. I don't think, I don't think that, uh, the Chamber has agreed to host events if they're in there. I think that they're allowing the events to work around them, you know, evolve around them. If they, if an event needs to happen, they're gonna be invisible when the event's going on.
So that means somebody with the city is gonna have to be the person in charge and be there and make sure everything's-
For the Historical Society, too. Most of the events have been held, to my knowledge, have been kind of hosted by the Historical Society at this point. I don't know that the city's ever, has a city in your time ever hosted an event there that we headed up. Have you seen us head up an event out there? I think it's been all about the-
I know originally the plan was to rent it for weddings and receptions and things like that, which would require probably a different type of insurance, I'm guessing. And if somebody employed with the city to be there. And so I, I didn't know if that was still gonna be an option or what, what's been discussed.
I think we never did get it compliant, we'd not let it out.
So, I mean, is Andrea there or who else?
Yeah. I believe we could, we could possibly move forward with some of those other things if we could get it compliant to where we wouldn't be a dud if something went wrong.
Well, you gotta go a long ways.
Yeah.
I mean, that's facts, I mean, just go and have a look at it.
The truth, yeah, my opinion is, once this group of people, but my kids could care less about the building. I mean, once we're all gone, it's probably gonna be gone anyway. I mean, that's my opinion. Yep, I can't see the younger folks now.
We'll get a, a better feel for it, I think, when Andrea comes to talk with us. So we're gonna go past that one right now. I started sending out letters today requesting, uh, and this is just a, a start of a series of, of letters that I'm gonna be sending out. About littered places, places are cluttered, dirty, not maintained. I won't see what I can do with this, and I'm hoping for good results. We, I've got citizens wanting me to pull the ordinance and place fines and this kind of thing. I'm trying to work one more time with these people through a letter from my desk with my signature to get them to voluntarily, uh, clean those debris away and start maintaining these properties. If it doesn't happen, I'm afraid the other option is the only thing on the table. We're getting numerous complaints, um, and they're coming to here, they're coming to you as council people. And it's just gotta be dealt with. So I've started, as you get these complaints, get me an address, and I'll find out who to address on it, whether it's a renter or whether it's a landlord. And I'm gonna write them a letter first, asking them, and I'm gonna do a follow-up. Uh, and we're gonna see what happens, so. The last thing I want to do is start finding property owners. But I just hate that it's going in this direction, but we're having more and more people become negligent about keeping up their properties and. Anybody.
Yeah, they're getting a lot of grabs by it. But getting back before you leave this city hall up there. If, we, we either gonna have to tear it down, fix it up and use it there, or go in and get a price and fix the old building and see what it's gonna cost. Now, what we need to do is find a good, somebody that would go in there and tell us that knows what they're doing, how much they can go in there and rework the building that's sitting there. Because it's really an embarrassment when you go in it. And if it can be reworked and reworked for half of what we're building new and for it, I'd be a hundred percent for it. It's sitting right there in a good place, you know. But I, I, I just don't know how bad when you get in there. Now, the bathrooms don't bother, because we know we can move the ba- bathrooms to another place and run it out and put it onto the sewer lines. And we'll have to use the old sewer lines that's under that building. We could do that, you know, we could fix that. But, uh, we're gonna have to do something anyway. It doesn't seem that anybody's saying it, and if it's gonna cost us seven hundred million dollars right now building new and I, I don't think we've got the money to do that now. And I don't want to leave this place with a big debt like that, that we really don't have to die out. Because I was hoping we could do it with the money that, you know, build another building. If we build a basement, we could build another building for two or three hundred thousand dollars. We got two hundred for that property. Well, a hundred thousand dollars wouldn't bother us to have a new building if we could put it in the basement and above it, you know. But if we can't do that, well.
I think it's gonna, I think it's gonna have to be larger than, than the three thousand feet, um, for it to house what we need it to house, and-
It don't need to be too small, you're right, Bob. That would be, you don't need to have to start in five years going in there and enlarge it.
I would, I'd be willing to meet Friday morning with any two of you men that are volunteer, or Tammy and one of you. If y'all will come to the cit- to the city hall, an old police station up there, and let's make a list of what we think we've got to do besides the bathrooms. And let's walk through every room of it and see the condition of it. Because I think we need to look with our own eyes before we try to decide.
Well, I think if you're gonna do that, you need to get, uh, somebody, two good carpenters to be with, with, we go whoever, and, uh, let them look at it and kind of give us an idea. They can explain some things. Bruce Miller, I know would be a good, and I think Bruce is a good, honest fellow, and he's been through about all kinds of. And I don't know of somebody, we need another one that can tell us about what we could do and get by. You know, that's what we need to know. We need some information from somebody that can tell us whether it'd be beneficial to us to try to go in there and redo that one or to build a new one. Somebody that really knows what it, really what it's gonna cost.
As soon as I can get two contractors to agree to go, can, can, who can I call to go with me? I, I want somebody with me.
I'd go with you. I'd be glad to go, but I got a funeral Friday morning.
Well, it won't be that soon, so you know, now's the, do you?
We just gotta make sure we don't have more than is allowed by the meeting laws. I think i- if any three, if you want to do a three-person committee, uh, you know, that's not a problem. Uh, I don't mind to be there, but I'll set it up if three of you wanna go.
Y'all go, y'all go then.
All right.
If you want to.
Yeah. I can't go Friday morning.
No, I want to set it up for Friday morning.
Okay.
I'll set it up for time. If you're willing to go.
Yeah.
At, at the time you can go, all right? You're willing to go?
Yeah, I can go by any time.
All right, we'll just report back to y'all then on that. And I'll get two carpenters and get-
Contractors. Contractors, yeah, and get, you know, get, we got a bunch we could, we need somebody that really knows and to meet. Bruce, Bruce Miller, yeah.
Greg, Greg Carter would be good.
Yeah, Greg would be all right.
Greg, Bruce, they could do it all.
Yeah.
All right. Well, I'll try to get them lined up when they can meet with us, and then I'll put y'all notice to come.
And, and get them to go in, go into the-
We're gonna go every room.
Yeah, up there.
Every room.
Yeah, and see what it would take, what they would suggest it would take to fix that thing and make it.
And on a voluntary basis, if any of y'all get time to go by and, and look at it for yourself and make notes, that's fine, too, and we'll all be on the same page then. But I just want, if I go up there, I want somebody that knows what they're looking at and can kind of give us some estimates, uh, the numbers that it might take to put, uh, good bathrooms in there and do any other repairs, uh, that's known in the building to be needed. That's, that's a good, uh, plan, Jim.
Don't you, 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 that old fire, where the fire station was now, see, that could be redone and to make it more space. I don't know if they've done anything with it up there or not, I haven't been in there. You know, they had a big place for fire truck and all that stuff like that.
Yeah, that's where the chief's office and stuff is, isn't it?
Oh, that's where the chi, yeah.
Well, that's been turned into offices, nope. There's a sign of the fire department there in the morning. Uh, animals continue to be an ongoing problem. We had a call in, a complaint yesterday that our policeman had killed a kitten, uh, in front of children and things like that. I checked on it, uh, there was a kitten found with a stimp where it had maggots running out of its rear end and it's walking in circles, staggered around. The police got it, took it up in the woods and put it down, which, which was humanitarian, but it wasn't done in the manner that it was reported to me. I got the stray on it before I went home yesterday, and it was not a cruel act, it was a merciful act. And, but we got, uh, we had a raccoon that someone came from, uh, North Alabama and picked it up and examined it, said we did the right thing. It had the stimpper also, so there may be a st- a stimpper outbreak, I don't know. We may have more sick animals, 'cause we got lots of strays. Uh, our underground drainage is full of kitty cats. They're just grown cats and everything come out of those storm drains and, uh, nobody really claims them. And they're, they belong to the city, I reckon. And we've got, from time to time, we have, uh, other animal problems, such as dog problems. All across the nation now, you hear more encounters with wild animals, uh, cat, whether it's coyotes, uh, mountain lions, bears, in places that have never been reported. And, uh, escaped snakes, large snakes escaping, uh, houses. And so we're gonna be dealing with more and more of these problems. We have very little animal, uh, we don't have security for these animals. The, the shelters aren't here to house all these strays. And so it becomes a problem for the city. And how we deal with them is, is gonna be, we've almost got to devise a plan. It, it's not gonna be easy. Uh, if we now bite someone, uh, and it don't have a collar on, you think the owner's gonna, oh, that, that's my dog. It bit little Johnny over there. No, they're not gonna say that's my dog, then.
Well, the county pound is responsible for all the strays. So there's a plan.
That's your plan?
I mean, the city, we're paying our portion, correct? We're paying our portion as required by the law. The county has provided their contract employee, so.
Do the animals have to be captured or will they capture alone?
Unless they've changed their contract, she provides all means necessary to capture the animal. Because if, if an employee of the county tells an individual to catch the animal and then the individual is bitten under the instruction of the county, I, I personally, and I'm no attorney, would think that the county would be liable in that situation. So unless her contract is changed, uh, she's responsible for everything necessary to catch the animals.
This is good though, I, I didn't realize that.
You know, these snakes, I think what they're doing, people getting their pets, they get too big, they can't handle them. They just turn them loose, just get, get rid of them. Now, I, I don't think I wanna pet snake, though.
There's something fascinating you didn't, you know, you know. I just, I'm not a snake fan, but there are people that are snake fans.
You might wanna check with Brooke at the county commission office and I'll get a copy of the current contract that their impounding officer is working under and, and just verify that. But, um, older versions of the contract say that she's responsible for, um, any equipment necessary to catch the animals. But Brooke would be able to clarify that quickly. Or Scott, huh?
Okay. Very good, thanks, Tammy. I just had concerns over how to go about rounding up strays and biting vicious, uh, dogs. And, um, I don't know that we've got vicious cats. I heard of a vicious squirrel recently. Some guy was giving the squirrel meth so it would attack. He had an attacked squirrel, once he filled it up with mayo.
If you had a man, I'd probably be an attack man. I'd never try it.
I guess it's time to move to outer space. I guess it's time to move to item six. Alright, we're talking about paving. Item six is about paving and uh. We're invited Mike to be with us this afternoon. Mike's been uh assortment of things lately. Cleaning, cleaning up trade, old trade of parts and helping the school out a little bit this week, a day or two. But he's ready to get serious about his paving and road fixing and. We've got this money covered from the state. It's two hundred thousand dollars and we're positive. That we're gonna get this money. We don't have it in hand. We'd like to get these streets paved this summer. What I'd like to do is uh let the council, uh, or ask the council to authorize the bids to be. Put out on the two hundred fifty thousand dollars that we're gonna be spending. So we can get those streets paved this summer instead of next year. And they're leaving it really bad and uh some worse than others, but um. I'd like to be able to put that on the agenda. Mike, can you address this at all about how, how long you think it's gonna take to get bids in on this or are you working on some bids?
I contacted Murphy paving. He came and looked yesterday, not yesterday, last week. And he, he, he was working on figures today to get back with me and I was hoping I'd have some numbers for you by uh meeting time, but I haven't got them, so. He's not really doing a bid. He's just giving me an estimate of what he thinks each road's gonna cost. And then at the time we let do the bid, then he'll put in a bid for it. But it, it, he is nice enough that he came over and looked at them to give us a, maybe a closer. Look at what it's actually gonna cost to do it, uh, from his perspective and uh. So hopefully within the next couple of days I'll have some. Pictures from him. They're out of uh Mississippi. The same people that did Smokey Bear Road.
They did a good job on that.
They sure did. Well.
Good job.
So.
And how much did Smokey bear cost?
Fifty thousand, wasn't it? Right at fifty.
Yeah. That was an overlay and they did a little grinding.
Yeah, they milled up the shoulders and then the rust spot down, spots down in the building, they milled those up and. Of course, you have to mill where another road ties into it, so it's milling and, and paving, so. Overlay, but I guess you'd say about a three inch overlay of what was already there. It's basically the same thing that we'll be doing to the ones we've, we've got now. Overlaying the ones that we got with some milling and stuff to those.
How, how far was that? Was it a mile, two miles or what'd you do? And that road half, half.
Smokey Bear Road?
Yeah.
It was, uh, it's a little bit less than a mile. Yeah.
So that's, you can see.
Probably, probably closer to a half a mile than would be a mile.
So we didn't save nearly a hundred thousand dollars a mile in them.
Right, right. So we figured.
We ain't gonna get anything on two miles.
Well, what, we're, we're, we're right at three miles is what we're anticipating.
Well, are you gonna tar and gravel any others?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Those are bad ones, you're probably gonna tar and gravel.
The ones other than the ones that we're gonna pave asphalt.
I think that's a good, yeah.
I'd like to have been started already, but I've had other things to come up that we needed to take care of.
Have we got to use about two machines, something like.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're about to use up our third load.
Okay.
That's seven hundred fifty gallons that we've, we've patched with so far and, and uh.
Is that, is that a good support for this machine?
I believe it's a great, good, I think. And as time goes on, we're gonna get better at using it. You know, we're, it, it's not an easy piece of equipment to use. You've got to hand, I mean, I could tell you all day long how to do it, but until you grab hold of it and start doing it yourself, it, it's a. It takes some getting used to.
If you're trying to make it through this summer without your part-time hands too, watching, you're trying to do it with just your crew.
That's right.
The last two years, we've given you what, two extra people?
Yes.
Yeah, he's gonna try this summer to do it all with just his regular men.
Right. See, uh, we spent the last three weeks.
Bush hogging.
Well, the, the last three weeks, we haven't been able to bush hog. We, we cleaned up the uh, the uh Brooks property over there that Mr. Newell came and talked to y'all about. We cleaned it up. It took us about two and a half weeks, sixty hours, uh, one and a half weeks, sixty hours manpower. That's actually one person working, we actually had two people over there, but anyway, it was sixty hours. Well, we called, hauled off nine of those big red dumpsters full of stuff. And seven dump truck loads. So.
And we sent him the bill?
We haven't, we haven't.
You have to come up with a bill again?
Yeah, I'm, I'm waiting on, I, I know what mine's gonna be, but I'm waiting on the one from the uh Franklin County Land Management Company.
Also, they are gonna submit Mr. Brooks' bill. He's getting the tally on it and then we'll send it. I want Scott to write to accompany murder that goes with it or help me word it.
And then so far this week, we've been working for the strip with the football field.
Well, what, what actually are they doing on that, on that front? I go by there every day, but I can't figure out what's going on.
They've redone the, the press box and the concession stand and the bathroom or whatever. They've built a patio out front of the concession stand. Big concrete pad out there and they're gonna break the front of it. Built two new ticket boxes and steps that go up each side of. Behind each one of those little ticket boxes that go up, up to the front. They build a wheelchair ramp down closest to the gym that where you can go down there and ride, go up the ramp in wheelchair. And do all that over there. Concreted underneath those metal bleachers. And then we've been digging up asphalt for them to lay side. You know how the parking lot kinda goes up? They're gonna slide that instead of there being, being parked in there, so. We finished that up. Well, we got all the asphalt up today and then they're, we almost get through and then they find something else they want us to do, so. Tomorrow, I think we're gonna pull up a little bit of chain link fence, so. We agreed to help them with that. So I have, I mean, make a long story short, I'm probably gonna be about three weeks behind on my paving. It's probably gonna, I, I hope to start finishing, finishing my bush hogging in a week or a week and a half. Starting tomorrow's thirty, so then we'll be off two days for holidays and so I'm, I'm, I just want to already be started now, but I'm not, so. We'll get there. We, we may have, we may go further into the fall. Then we normally would have, but hopefully the weather stays warm, will be warming up if we can continue on once we get started, so. The bad thing is I'll have to stop again somewhere in between and bush hog again and that takes about at least four weeks to get all the way around, so.
Are they gonna have, are they gonna have grass in between the concession stand and the parking lot there?
Yes, yes. In between the bleachers and the parking lot.
Have grass? Don't sound like a good idea for no football stadium or anything.
It'd be pretty. I don't know how.
Yeah, yeah, it'd be pretty, but it's gonna keep it mold and keep it pretty, I think. I think I'm gonna get volunteer gene. I'll volunteer to help them put back concrete or something.
But really it was, uh, what we tore up was, you couldn't park on it anyway. It was basically.
Well, I'm not talking about the bad. I'm, I'm speaking of the upkeep.
Yeah, yeah, it's gonna be.
It's gonna be, yeah.
It's gonna be.
It's gonna be expensive, the upkeep is.
But it's, it's really nice, I mean, it's all sheet rock on the inside of the fresh rocks and.
They've been working over there. They had a bunch of people working over there today.
Can you talk to uh these people about the paving? Do they also do the strapping?
They can.
Okay, so are we talking to them?
He told me straight up, he really don't, they're strapping.
So we're gonna need to talk to somebody else because we're gonna have to have.
Most everybody around here uses Ozark out of that.
How expensive is that going to be?
Uh, let's see, we did uh Grandview Drive and this road here. This road here and the industrial Jeffrey Park. And I think it was right around six thousand dollars to do all that. So it's, it's, it's gonna be in the neighborhood of six thousand dollars or so, six to ten, I'd say.
Is the whole street paved over there looking in? I mean, not paved, but striped?
All the way down to uh D H R.
It must not be very bright.
Yeah, they were having people driving in the middle of the road and.
It's got turning lanes.
There wasn't a dedicated turn lane to go up to the money back at home plant and it's a little dangerous, like. And the folks at the management of the mobile home plant asked me to strip that, so while we had the strippers in here, we got them to go over there and strip that too.
That was.
They were doing Grandview and.
Two and a half years ago, I guess.
It's been, it's been one week.
You can, you can get a paint that's, that's gonna be. Probably twice that much if you, if you really, and they put a grid in and it reflects and all that kind of stuff. We just pretty much just painted the tracks from there. It looks, the ones on Grandview show up pretty good. And this one right down from here. Probably a particular, out in the middle of the main highway, I'm talking about where it is like that, you probably need that over like that, isn't it? A lot of traffic, but not like it would be.
We were going to deliver a lane. They told me it wasn't wide enough.
I'd like to have that item. If Mike can get enough information, well, asking those questions Monday night, uh, if we can get enough info to make us satisfied. I'd like to go ahead and get these bids in and get this work done this summer. We are gonna get this money, in my opinion. There's no question that they granted us this two hundred thousand dollars and. Paperwork's been turned in. They, they don't react immediately to our paperwork, but I think the checks of them.
So are we gonna run the bids or is?
Yeah, we need to put the, put the bids in paper, I guess, however.
The local paper? Or I mean.
Where we normally put them.
I, I, I don't know. That's why I'm asking. I don't know anybody that takes local, that, you know, does this, so I mean, are we gonna have to?
Well, we got Bunn down.
Bunn would probably be.
Yeah, yeah, of course Murphy, they'll bid on it and uh. I would think Bunn would say it in paper, one of our local papers, so.
So.
Where do we normally run those? Do we normally?
Sometimes they're ran all over the state, you know, like in Montgomery and Birmingham news and here it just depends on. And I don't, you know, you're looking at probably a month of advertising.
Right.
So that's gonna put in seven weeks.
Yeah. What we ran into last time was, we couldn't get anybody. Bunn would acknowledge that we needed paving though, you know, so, and then we talked to.
I think it was acceptable, wasn't it, with Scott, to do it the way you did as far as?
Yeah, because it was under the, it was under the bid, under the bid dress.
So we'll have to put it out. It just depends if y'all want me to advertise it in Birmingham news and local paper.
My name keeps us legal, so.
I'll talk to Scott and confirm how we need to do that.
But it's peak season, so finding somebody that's willing to do what we're gonna do within, within the months that we wanna try to get done is, is gonna be.
All the big favors in Birmingham.
Yeah.
I got so many favorable dollars done in Birmingham, I'm not believing.
But really, if we're gonna try to get it done this summer, we, we got to get, get the ball rolling for sure. And I guess, but our question was. Did we? Go ahead and take the bids or and, and just, and let the contract on it. Would anticipate to get the two, two hundred thousand dollars? Or we're gonna wait till we get to two hundred thousand dollars in hand before we? Is that, am I right in saying that, Mayor? Is that?
I'd like, I'd like the mission to go ahead. I, I feel scared about getting the, the money granted to us. Mr. Cooper said, how much can y'all got in the game?
Right, and they've written us a letter saying that we're.
We told him what we would put up, our twenty percent, he said we had it. And it's on the list that we had, six streets. If he doesn't send the check, he's not a man of his word.
Maybe you find out something sure and then one denies, but we can vote on it then. Can't vote here, it doesn't hit anybody.
No.
So just find out and go ahead and do it. I'd put it. Or we just go ahead and if you think it's for sure, sure.
He said this in the presence of Mr. Brown, the district man, northern district man. I, I know Mr. Brown real well. I called him. Signed out.
Yes.
Think it's hard, think it's hard just to go ahead because then we're getting behind, we need to.
Now, those lists of streets, I'm sure I'd probably have to run that in the bid or whatever. Are all of those gonna be paved like what y'all are talking about right now? Or, or some of those gonna be, uh, that tar and gravel?
No, they're all be, they'll all be.
All those mentioned are gonna be paved? Yes, okay.
Okay. Um, now we, when we did our estimate, it's basically what we did, our idea and, and. Unless I'm off several, you know, ungodly amount, then we oughta be pretty close.
Yeah.
So.
That's why we tried to make the streets and the money match up.
Right.
And then we've already fixed one situation that kinda had to be fixed with some of this money.
Right.
Seventh street fell in before we got, got there, so we had to get it passed along. They already put the new tile in for that, that problem. That was to be addressed in this Monday, if you're talking about. It's already been addressed. Actually, you got anything else today?
I don't think so. Don't believe so.
We had a good health screening. We had good participation. We needed what percentage? We needed eighty percent?
Yes.
And we got it.
I'm excited, yes.
Yeah, so uh all our people were cooperative and uh came and participated in our health screening. That helps us to keep our costs to a minimum on our insurance rates rising. This health screening helps us a lot. So I appreciate the employees for participating in that, getting us a higher percentage to get a break on our insurance. With all that said, let's go to the bridge.
Y'all going to the bridge?
We're going to the bridge. You wanna go with us? We're gonna go to Grandview. We're gonna go to Grandview.
And y'all going fishing?
We're going up the bridge.
Oh, no. I'm going on record, I'm just going to see the bridge.
I'd look back several times.
I bet you have.
But we, we wanna run a little out in the paper, uh, about our new bridge for Grandview and they've agreed to run over with us to get a snapshot of the council, kinda, of view of the bridge and, uh, say a nice hello. So, and that's, uh, um, that's, uh, the bridge.
Don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com/fortyninecountynewstv.